Hey Dan.
Hi Danny, welcome. Lily is sleeping on my foot. We have one dial in person, I'm not sure who that is.
That's Sean, I believe.
Sean is on, I see Sean. Is that Sean? Are you on mute Sean?
Yeah.
Seven o'clock, I'm gonna give Allison a few more minutes to join.
Did you want me to give Allison a call or?
Um. Yeah, it's seven oh two. I can text her real quick.
Okay.
I know she has something else on Monday night as well, so that could be running late. I can, I can start with an introduction if you want.
Deb, before you start, I'm gonna then turn over the hosting duties to you, okay? So just if you see someone in the waiting room, let them in.
Okay.
Okay, you're all set.
Alright, thanks. Okay, we're gonna get started here. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Outville development planning board meeting. It is Monday, October 26th at 7:00 PM. Due to the COVID-19 restrictions, this meeting is being held remotely and both the audio and video portion of this meeting are being recorded. My name is Deb Hacks, I'm the planning board chair. At this time, would the rest of the planning board please introduce themselves? I know most of us know each other, but certainly for Nadia's benefit. Starting an alphabetical order, please. Barb, you're on mute. Nope, you're on mute Barb.
Sorry, I was clicking on the wrong thing. Hi, Paul Felder.
Dan Hem.
John Yuki.
Steve Caruso.
Simon Litten.
Simon, Simon is new to the board and he's our alternate, so we certainly welcome him. Also with us tonight, we have Ginger Hannah, our secretary of the planning and zoning board. We have, who else do we have?
Dean.
Oh, we have Dean Whalen, yep, who's our board representative, and we have Lance Moore, our building inspector.
Hello, everyone.
We are waiting on our attorney, but we can get started at this point. Tonight's first agenda item is to review a special use permit from Nadia Raza to open the Curry Potter Restaurant. In order to open the public hearing at this time, I'm going to read the leaving notice. Okay. Notice is hereby given that the planning board in the village of Altamont, New York will hold a public hearing pursuant to Article 355-42 on October 26th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. On the application of Nadia Raza, owner of Curry Potter Corp. to operate a Pakistani restaurant at a property at the Plaza 187 Main Street, Altamont Tax map ID 48.06-3-1 in pursuant to Article 355-35 for its special use permit and pursuant to Article 355-23 for assigned permit. The property is Zoned Commercial Business District. This meeting is being held remotely as part of the village of Altamont's COVID-19 response plan and can be accessed by the public via the link below. Plans are open for inspection at the village offices during normal business hours. Okay, with that, that does open our public hearing. I was waiting on Allison to give a little a guest speech regarding the application as it was submitted. Nadia, as the application is submitted, we can only review Phase 1 at this point. Phase 2 and Phase 3 appear to be in addition to the building as it exists now. If that's the case, that has to be done by Jeff Thomas. He would have to come before the board with an amendment to his special use permit. So, we can only look at it from the standpoint of, for better wording, the old subway. That's the floor plan that we can look at currently.
Right.
We can't look at Phase 2, we can't look at, you know, anything that's going on outside, any plans that Jack may have in the future. We can only look at your plan right now, does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, alright, good. Alright, so, that being said, the public hearing is now open and I don't see anyone on from the public. Although I do see a phone call, but I think that's probably the enterprise. We'll see a couple people in the waiting room, hang on a second.
There she is.
Okay, I think I have Allison. Hello? Allison, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi Allison, thank you for joining.
No, no problem.
I saw you were waiting there. I did give a quick scenario on why we were just reviewing Phase 1 of the application.
Okay.
You know, Nadia has, the applicant has no problem with that, she totally understands. Basically, I just said that we can't review a plan for something that doesn't exist, that Jeff Thomas, the original applicant, would have to come before us to amend the special use permit that we granted years ago.
Yes, yes. Basically, when we got the application, you know, I see here that, you know, the proposal is described as, you know, having a new restaurant in the existing restaurant space, but the plans attached appeared to show, you know, the restaurant in areas of, you know, a proposed building expansion that, you know, hasn't come before the planning board yet. And that would require actually an amendment to the approvals that had previously been granted to the Plaza, the landlords' approvals.
Right.
But, you know, we can review the special use application as a change in use based on, you know, your proposal to operate a restaurant in the existing space.
Okay, great. Thank you Allison. Okay, that being said, I don't see anyone else waiting to come in. And I don't see any other phone numbers other than what I believe is the enterprise. I don't think, enterprise, do you have any questions for the applicant or for the board?
I don't, thank you, no, thank you Ms. Hacks.
Thank you Sean. Okay, then given that, I'm not going to close the public comment period at this point, only because I want the applicant to give us a quick, I don't know, plan of what she wants to do now, you know, what her plans are for the future. I want to give the board a chance to ask some questions. And if we have to hold the meeting over to another date, I don't want to close the public comment until we're sure of that. Does that make sense Allison?
Yes, that makes sense, you know, especially because, you know, to the extent there's any kind of confusion, you know, regarding what this application is for. If it was, you know, seeking approvals to actually modify the building or make a change to the Plaza site plan, because that is kind of what was shown in the plans attached here. You know, I think it's for the public's benefit to hear us kind of explain that, you know, we can process this application, but it's going to be for a sit-down restaurant used in the existing restaurant space. So to the extent, you know, anyone was confused by that, they can request the minutes from this planning board meeting or the video of this planning board meeting, they can see our discussion here. And, you know, to the extent, you know, that changes, you know, anyone, you know, they may, you know, have a comment or a question, leaving that public hearing comment period open, I think, just allows us to receive any comments anyone may have after we provided this clarification.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, that being said, Nadia, would you like to give us a quick synopsis of what you're doing initially and maybe what you plan on doing in the future? That won't be reviewed tonight, but, you know, I think we'd all like to know what your plans are and what your future plans are.
Sure. So, our plans right now are the 1,200 square feet that we have in the old subway space. We plan to open a sit-down for now, according to COVID guidelines. But we, we know that initially we're gonna be doing a lot of takeout. The plans in the future is to have a sit-down full-running dine-in restaurant. But for now, I know we're limited to our space. We only have about 800 square feet in the dining area. The rest is for the kitchen, so we're limited to our tables. We're limited to a bar. We obviously can't have a bar right now, that would be a functioning bar with the six feet of social distancing. So, we do plan to build a bar that is only gonna probably occupy two people at a time with the rest of the dining area. But things will obviously change with, you know, COVID settling down a little bit. There's a lot of limitations right now in what we can and cannot do, so we want to focus more on takeout and delivery.
Okay, um, so I guess, for me, right off the bat, do you not plan on having a sit-down restaurant at this point?
We do, we do, with the social distancing in place and limited seating, limited tables, limited seating.
Just no bar at the time?
Just no bar. We plan to open the bar, but with the size of the bar, we're only gonna be able to have about maybe one person sitting at one end and another person sitting at the other end. So, it's gonna be more of a service bar.
Okay, alright. I'll let the rest of the board, I have questions, but I'll let the rest of the board, if you have questions, wanted to go ahead and ask Nadia. And Simon, just so you know, just because you're the alternate, basically all that really means is that you can't vote. If you have any questions for the applicant, feel free to ask them.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. How many tables are you planning initially in the restaurant?
Barbara, only gonna be, have enough space for six tables.
Okay.
So, four of which will have four-person seating and two of which will be like a two-top. So, we kinda have to divide up and use our space to the best of our ability.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
This is Dan, I have one question. Is the Phase 1 dependent on Phase 2 being approved?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so if Phase 2 never happens, you're still opening?
Oh yeah, absolutely. In the lease, we actually also put contingency of liquor license, but I'm not even gonna wait for that. We're just, we're so anxious, we're excited. I think everybody around that's visited is excited. I don't want to wait for anything. Phase 2 is obviously a dream, I would love to expand, but that all depends on Jeff Thomas and what happens with the village and the board, but we plan to open as soon as you guys allow us.
Okay, thanks.
Eve, John, have any questions?
I have no questions, no.
I get it.
Okay, go ahead Simon.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea to have a Pakistani restaurant in the village. There's, there's, there's one thing about your plan that I'm a little concerned about, which is that you're gonna be doing takeout. And during COVID, takeout has become a real solid waste issue. A lot of communities have found that takeout waste has become a significant part of municipal waste that's being collected. And that is, that's unavoidable, given, given the nature of the COVID situation. But what might be avoidable is the amount of plastic waste that's generated. I know that the the brew pub at Indian Ladder is using cardboard materials to do takeout, which is less permanent in the environment than plastic. I'm just wondering whether you've thought about that.
Absolutely. We're big on recycling. My, I have two kids that are 12 and 13, and we have a six-month-old at home, so my 13-year-old, she's, she's into all of this, and she made a great point. She said, Mama, you know, the curry can go in the plastic containers because it is going to leak out, but the rest of it, the rice and anything that's dry, we plan to put in those cardboard, like the Chinese boxes that fold.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I agree with you on that.
Alright, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Good question Simon.
Yeah, Nadia, this is Steve Caruso. I did not see in my packet, do you have, what are your hours of operation going to be? Whether or not it was in mine?
Oh, yeah, it wasn't in there. We plan to be open Tuesday to Thursday from 11 to 10:00 PM. We were hoping to be open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 11 to midnight, but that obviously can change, you know, if, if we feel that it's not as busy as we thought it would be, because the village does get fairly quiet around 10 o'clock. We may change that later, but we do want to be open till about 12.
Okay.
And then Mondays, we plan to be closed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, I do have a couple questions and, you know, there are a few things that need to be included in your special use permit that weren't included. There is no breakdown of the square footage of the actual floor plan. I know you say 1,200 square feet, but really what we need to see is, alright, 1,200 feet, but 1,000 feet of that is going to be the actual restaurant part. 200 feet is going to be the kitchen. Where are the, you know, the restrooms going to be located, the side of the tables?
I have it all, I wish I'd handed it in.
Yeah, see, we're going to need that.
Yeah, I've had this one for a while. I should have thought of handing this one in. It explains the kitchen, the square footage, where the table seedings are going to go, 30-seat dining, it includes the bar, the setup for the servers. We are contemplating still the two toilets, although they're in the prints. We're gonna start with the one toilet, only because our space is so limited. So, we're going to decide in the next few months about a second toilet, but we're just gonna be starting with one. So, although these prints have the two toilets, I can cross off one and change the square footage to show the exact area coverage.
Okay.
But I do have the dining plan, yes.
Now, you're saying there's going to be four, four, four-person tables and two, two-person tables, is that what, okay. So that's something else that, that probably should be on there, is the size of the tables. But what we need to know is, you know, the reason we're asking these questions is the occupancy of the restaurant. If you have, you know, four tables of four and then two tables of two, and then in the future, two people at the bar plus employees, we need to know these things. Parking-wise, there's a certain amount of spaces that you need to have, based on the number of employees, the maximum number of guests you could have. So, you know, we're asking these questions not to make it difficult, but just to go by our code and know that everything is the way it should be.
Oh, absolutely. The parking was also a concern of mine, because we share with Bamboo Garden and Paisanos, so I did have it included in my lease, that I have access to all of the back parking. That would be accessible to all of my guests.
Okay.
So I think the only thing we need to do right now is, Jeff was mentioning, as my landlord, that he had to put in a handicap space back there, obviously before I open, but that entire parking space is available to me.
Is there?
They'd be walking from the back parking lot around the building to go in the front?
That's what I was just gonna ask. So, so there's no entrance in the back, but there's gotta be a handicap parking space back there? I would say there might have to be a handicap parking space in the front, not in the back.
There's definitely one in the front, right in front of Paisanos.
I think, John, you might know this, you're better with that, I think you might need two.
Okay.
And maybe that's why he said one in back, but I don't know that that makes sense to put a handicap parking space in the back of the building where there are no entrances or exits.
Right. That, that might be Phase 2. But we'll let that, we'll let that go. So if we do need the two handicap spaces in the front, and that's confirmed, yeah, we'll, we'll have to revise that and fix it.
Deb, when we talk handicaps parking spots, now how many businesses do you have? Paisanos, you have the Chinese restaurant, then you're going to have this proposed restaurant. Can they all share one parking spot for handicap? Or should each business have their own handicap? Doesn't make sense, they have three or four businesses with one handicap, doesn't it?
Eight.
I, I believe it's based on the site itself. You know, i- if you have, if that whole plaza was one restaurant, I don't know that it would change the number of handicap spots that were needed. It, I think it's based on the number of people that could possibly be in there at one time.
But that's, you know, and that's also something that might have been specified in the site plan for the Plaza when, when the landlord went through and got his approval. So, we should determine, you know, how many handicap spaces he had represented at the time would be available on that site. How that matches up with what's there now, just so we can confirm that, you know, that there is, you know, the number of handicap spaces that were determined appropriate at the time for the, the amount of space that was gonna be made available in that Plaza.
Right, so, so you agree, it basically is that the amount of space in the plaza, not just each individual restaurant or whatever, you know, taekwondo place or, you know. I think it is based on whatever he agreed with in the plaza, not just individually.
We should be able to confirm by going back and pulling those records.
Lance, did you have a chance to pull those records for the site permit? For Jeff? Nope, you're on mute. Hang on. There you go, try now, nope.
No.
You muted again.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, yes, they're on my desk.
Okay.
I haven't reviewed them yet, but I will. So we'll have a lot of those questions answered probably by tomorrow. But as far as handicap, John, it's not upon individual businesses, it's upon, it's upon the unit as one, you know?
That could get interesting if, you know, if you go from a takeout restaurant to a sit-down restaurant, or...
You could, John, not to change the subject, but you could easily have handicap in the back, because it's, it's all on one level, you know? Ideally, you'd want them in the front, and that's, that's up to the board, but it's, it's not unheard of having handicap around the rear of the building.
Well, that's a sloping down, so in the wintertime, cold weather, they're gonna have to navigate around there. I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't call parking in the back handicap parking, that's reasonable.
Well, that's up to our esteemed attorney to determine.
Wow.
Interesting question, you know, I'd have to look to see if the ADA requirements specify, you know, a maximum separation distance between the designated handicap parking space and the actual entrance to the facility. It's not something that I know off the top of my head, but it could very well be subject to a, you know, a maximum distance requirement.
Allison, if I could, this is Dean, I live this.
Yes.
There's not a specific distance designated or ratio or anything like that as far as where it can be. The ADA basically says that it should be, well, to the main entrance to a facility. And of course, therefore, ramped properly, no steps, all of that sort of thing.
Okay.
To John's point, although I think technically you could have a handicap space back there, I think maybe there should be some consideration by Jeff to maybe look at re-striping in the front. If either he's under currently or wants to address that specifically for the Pakistani restaurant. To John's point, it is awfully difficult push to come from back there all the way around, even if it isn't a grade, get to the front entrance.
I agree 100%.
Thanks, Dean.
You would have to come down Altamont Boulevard, they couldn't come from the railroad side.
Um, Danny just sent me, I think he just sent me this thing out of our code, Danny Ramirez. Danny. Nadia, Danny Ramirez is our zoning board chair, and he's like my second-hand man here. He just, I, did you just send me the code from our, is that from our code?
Yeah, on section 355-22 for sit-down restaurants. And I know there are considered many restaurants there, because you got the pizza place as well. They say one space per three seats plus one space per each employee for the maximum shift. Or one space per 100 square feet gross flow area plus one space per employee, whichever is greater.
Okay, so, thanks Danny. This is, this is the reason, Nadia, that we have to have the, the actual footage, you know, on your, on your application to see that we're meeting our code. So, you know, I, you have that now. Instead of, you know, I'm trying, I don't, I don't want to have to make you wait until next month. So, I'm thinking that we could hold a special meeting, like in two weeks. Once you get the information that we're requesting tonight into us. Once you get the information that we're requesting tonight into us, and we've had a chance to review it. As long as we hold the public meeting open, I don't think we have to make another announcement, we shouldn't have to, in the paper. We shouldn't, we don't have to send another notification out to the neighbors. Allison, do we have to make a notice in the paper that a continuation of the meeting will be held? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Sorry, I got a four-year-old who keeps coming into the picture here. If we've already noticed the public hearing in the paper and done the notices to the neighbors, we don't have to re-notice to keep the public hearing open. Either for an additional period to receive written comments, or open to a special meeting if you want to provide an additional opportunity to receive in-person comments.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. Okay, um, given that, oh, actually, I do have another question for you. The legal notice stated a sign permit. I did not see a sign permit in our package. Are you planning on having any type of sign?
Yes. I am in the process of picking out, I, I picked a company called Ray Signs, I think he did the rest of the plaza, so I wanted everything to jive together. I'm in the process of picking out two different signs, but I do need to get that to you folks.
And where is the sign going to be? Is that going to be where like Subway was, and where Paisanos is, and all that?
Going to be, just replace the Subway sign. And then on that board that is, that faces the parking lot, I'm just gonna go right underneath, I think Bamboo Garden or whichever one.
Okay. So, the, each sign has always been, each, each sign has always been requested by the tenant. That's not something that Jeff had in his original special use permit? Because if he, if he, I'm, I'm just trying to save you some step here, and, and again, this would go back to whatever Lance found. If, if he applied for a sign permit for each of those individual tenants, then you shouldn't have to reapply. But, you know, you may wanna check with Jeff on that to see how that was originally scoped. I, I don't know.
I think when Jeff and I spoke about it, he had mentioned that I would need to, to do everything for the sign, yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Then you, you would have, you would certainly have to do the sign permit. And, you know, you'd have to have the size of it, and what it would look like, have a rendition of that, have an actual drawing of it.
Absolutely.
Same thing, you know, with your floor plans, give us the exact measurements of everything. I don't, if you're going to include a, you probably have to amend this, this special use permit if you wanna include a bar later on. I don't think you wanna wait, you know, and include that in this one. But you could come back before us and amend whatever we do or do not approve on this, on this application.
Okay.
If you wanna add a bar at a later time.
Okay.
So, just so I understand, with this, with this application right here, you had kind of described previously that, you know, you were thinking of having a bar in the twelve-hundred-square-foot, the existing subway space. So are you looking, you know, you had said, you know, with the COVID restrictions in place right now, due to the social distancing requirements, if you had a bar in this space, it would probably really only be used as a service bar right now, due to the fact that you can't have, you know, you could probably only fit, you know, one to two people at the bar. But is your expectation that, you know, when the COVID restrictions are lifted, and you can go back to, you know, your maximum occupancy, that you, you know, would plan to have a bar in the twelve-hundred-square-foot, the existing subway space as it is right now?
Yes, we'd like to have that.
Okay. So I think Deb, then, I mean, then I, then I think you are actually applying for, you know, the sit-down restaurant designation right now with, you know, including
A bar.
The bar.
Yes. That's because, and I'll tell you why, we, we had opted to maybe not build the bar right now. But because we were in the process of building everything else, I really didn't want to shut down the restaurant to have to construct the bar. So although it will be a service bar, although I understand it's not gonna bring any income, because I will only have two people at a time due to COVID, we wanted to build it, so we don't have to shut down later for any further construction.
Yep. You don't show that in your plan, though. Right, you don't show that in your floor plan on phase one.
The bar inside?
Yeah.
I'll have to pull that up.
And that may be part of, you know, kind of what we had said before, you know, these plans that were submitted with this application, they kind of show like the phase one and the phase two, and it looks as though the bar area is kind of in this space that's designated as phase two. But understanding that we can't really review and approve a phase two right now, because it requires a modification to the building and a modification of the plaza's site plan. I think what we really need is for you to, you know, kind of amend your application to include that, what you were holding up, which is your layout of the existing twelve-hundred-square-foot space that shows, you know, where you'll have the service bar, where you'll have-
And that, right, and that includes the bar with the seating, and, you know, we've crossed off where we're trying to social distance. You can't see it now, but I'll have that too as soon as I can.
Yeah, that, exactly. So I think Deb, you know, with that clarification, and if we have that, you know, kind of revised layout, that is just covering the twelve-hundred-square-foot subway space, you know, we kind of get out of that whole, you know, phase one, phase two breakdown. And, you know, we're really just looking at the proposal to have the sit-down restaurant with the bar in the existing space. And I do think that was, you know, kind of covered by this application. It does state it in the narrative. I'm looking at the notice now, just to kind of see how we noticed it.
I don't think we said.
Yeah, it didn't specify. Okay. And that's okay, you know, it's, it's up to the, you know, the village to kind of classify what this use is. And it is, you know, it is really a change in use kind of from a restaurant, which was the subway, to what we define in our zoning laws, like a sit-down restaurant. And that definition says it can include a, a bar. So, you know, I think that, you know, in the application for a special use permit I am looking at right now, I had thought it said bar.
Uh, yeah, so, um...
Yeah, it's actually on the, the front of the EAF, Restaurant and Service Bar Serving Pakistani Cuisine.
But the EAF, we're not, we don't need, because it's a type-two.
Change in.
I have a question. Since she's gonna come back, Nadia has to come back with the information we so far said. Why don't you just come back with phase one, and leave all the other stuff off the drawing, so it's less confusing? That's what we're addressing, so why have all this other stuff that might come back and might not come back?
No, that's, that's what we're, that's what she, yeah, that's what we're asking her to do. She understands that, what she has to come back with. And then just include the bar, I guess, Nadia.
Bar the tables.
In the table.
Yep, and those are all inclusive in this print.
Do we need her then to note any, when she amends this application, to note bar somewhere, or the sit-down restaurant encompassed?
The sit-down restaurant, the definition does state it can include a bar. You know, I think, Nadia, when you resubmit that site plan, you know, even with just a cover letter that says, you know, enclosed is the, you know, the layout for the twelve-hundred-feet of the existing restaurant that I'm seeking the special use permit for. You know, note, it has an area designated for a sit-down, for seating, and also a bar area.
Okay.
And then that way, if anyone from the public wants to come in and review the application materials, they'll see, you know, with that clarification, you know, what's actually being proposed right now for the existing space. And it does avoid some confusion with that other plan that had the phase one and the phase two. Because you weren't really sure what, what was being applied for right now.
That sounds fair, Nadia?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, does anybody have any other questions for Nadia? At this time? No, I don't see anybody else online or waiting to get in. All right, then, given that, how fast do you think you can get all this to us, Nadia?
I can have this due tomorrow. Because I already have the print.
Okay, so, one thing, you know, make sure, if you look at the checklist for a special use permit, you know, copies of the applica-, you know, ten copies of the application, you, you know, we made all these copies in the village offices. So, you know, this should come in your package, or have all of that thing ready to go, ready for us.
Okay.
It, it speeds things along, because if, if the village, if, you know, Ginger or Patty have to do all this, it, it slows everything down, they're, they're trying to do the rest of the work themselves.
I'll print them right now.
All right, so, given that, today is the twenty-sixth. We're going to November. We're, we're dealing with Election Day, we certainly don't wanna do anything around that. How does, is the ninth too soon for everybody? November ninth?
It's fine.
It's fine, it works.
And I just, this is Ginger, I just want you to know, I'm gonna be in Louisiana visiting my daughter and her family from November seventh to the seventeenth. And then when I get back, I'll be quarantining, because I have to quarantine, so. So that doesn't need to stop anything, you know, I guess we could have stuff come into Lance, or someone else that can handle the paperwork. Or, you know, again, if Nadia, if you just make sure that we have ten copies, and Lance can get those around to everyone, we could do it that way, and then we can just record the meeting, and I can do the minutes when I get back.
That's fine, yeah, I, I, I don't, certainly don't wanna hold Nadia up, because, you know, someone's on vacation, that's not the way we work, and thank you, Ginger, you know, for mentioning that. Just lost my calendar. Okay, so, is, is everybody okay with the ninth?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Then, could I have a motion to extend the public hearing on the special use permit and hold a special meeting on November ninth, two thousand twenty, to review the amended special use permit for Curry Pada?
So move.
I make that motion.
Yep. Okay, John first, Barb second. Roll call, please.
Okay, so, Board Member Caruso?
In favor.
Board Member Hitt?
In favor.
Board Member Hukey?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder?
In favor.
And Chairperson Hext?
In favor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Okay, I think then Nadia, we're good with everything that you leave from us tonight. Thank you, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I absolutely love Pakistani food, so.
Thank you.
You had me at curry.
Deb.
Dean?
Yeah, just real minor. Nadia needs to correct it, but there's some very minor inaccuracies on the EAF that probably should be fixed for record.
The thing, the thing is, again, Dean, it's, it's a type-two, so we don't even have to review the EAF.
Correct.
Oh, okay, because there is some inaccuracies in what she-
Yes, I, yes, I know, yeah. Yeah, I'm, am I correct with that? Keep my stand notes.
Yeah, it's a type-two action for this one piece, so there's no need for the EAF at all.
Good, okay.
Thomas would have to submit it for his modifications.
Oh, yeah, he, he had to submit probably a, not the short form.
Right.
Thank you, Dean. Again, Nadia, you know, we're really looking forward to it, we certainly need more business at Altamont. Hopefully, we're not making things more difficult for you.
No, not at all, thank you, we're very excited.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, so then, Barb, you're not released from your duties yet.
Want me to make a motion to approve the minutes, is that what you're looking for?
Well, we can do that now if you want. We can skip around. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from nine-twenty-eight?
There you go, Barb.
I was gonna wait for you, dear. I make that motion.
I'll second it.
John? Roll call, please.
Okay, Board Member Caruso?
In favor.
Board Member Hitt?
In favor.
Board Member Hukey?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder?
In favor.
And Chairperson Hext?
In favor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the planning board documents that Ginger sent along, the subconditions, the planning board checklist, for the special use permit and the applicant checklist? Has it, you know, something came up tonight, so it's like this is an ever-changing thing. We're just trying to streamline everything, you know, the, the, the village employees, staff have enough to do without trying to keep track of everything they have to do for us also, so checklists are the thing to do. Does anybody have anything we should add to any of those? Oops. Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think Ginger did an excellent job with doing things.
And you may have already discussed this, but on the planning board checklist, is that the one that had the, one of them had the neighbor notification?
Yep, within five hundred feet.
The one below, I, it was a dup-, it, it was listed twice. And, I'm sorry, my paper-
The neighbors within five hundred feet, and then the neighbor notification letter and legal notice. So they're, they're actually two separate things.
Right. But, Dean, that it was, I'm sorry, I'm trying to-
Sorry.
Oh, no, of course, I can't find it. I thought it was repeated, like, two sentences down.
It may, if, if, if you're thinking the same thing I'm thinking, it may sound like it. Neighbors within five hundred feet of property requested from the town of Gildolin, they have a way of determining that. They being the town of Gildolin, so that we don't have to do the old-fashioned way with the ruler and say, oh, it's a, or an inch is five hundred feet. We actually request something from the town, so that's step one. And then step two of that would be actually sending out those neighbor notifications and the legal notice.
Okay.
The two separate steps, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, that sounds good.
And I'll add to that checklist that the list of neighbors should be included in the packet of the planning board.
Yeah, good, thank you, Ginger.
Yep.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
So with the handicap spaces, will we by November ninth just know, so I can discuss that with Jeff, and let him know if we need a second space? What I was thinking and brainstorming in my head is that we have that L-shaped parking lot in the front. And the one handicap space is right in front of Paisanos, I was thinking maybe closer to Main Street, we could put that second one at the very last parking spot, if need be. So is that something that we can discuss on November ninth, just to finalize that?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we, we- We can definitely, yeah.
Are you talking about the, the, where the corners come together?
Yeah.
Uh, well, where's my man from DOT? Because of line of sight, there may be a problem with that, so.
Or putting it maybe at the very, where the bushes are, where you go on the left of the subway?
That's a good spot, yeah.
Yeah.
Where are the ramps?
Ramps are far in, towards Stewart's. That's, that's street level.
Street level ramp.
Steps down by the library, but the, is accessible right there.
Okay.
Handicap spots right there.
But we're, we're saying to put the second one on where, like, the left, where subway, where, where the restaurant's going. Stop referring to it as subway.
Deb, Dean, again, if I could, I would, I would suggest you don't do that, if you're gonna add a third, or whatever's required. It would really wanna be up near the pizza.
Near the ramp.
Because otherwise you have a wheelchair individual going behind cars.
That's, that's why I asked where the ramp was.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
So we'll, we- So we'll, we, before the November 9th meeting, we should pull the approvals for Plaza to see what was required at the time when he obtained his site plan approval and where there was actually handicap spaces designated at the time. And just compare it to what's there now, what, you know, if any, any additional should be required as part of this application.
Lance, that's on you.
I got it.
I, I, I have an appointment at 4:30 tomorrow, but I'll, I'll try to stop. What time do you usually get there? Free-ish?
Yeah, a little earlier.
All right, I can try, I'll try to stop in and help you out a little bit if
Okay.
What we can come up with.
All righty.
And I already printed 10 copies, so I'll bring these over to either Ginger or Lance in the morning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so could I have a motion then to approve the, the, the planning board documents, the subconditions, planning board checklist, first special use permit and applicant checklist for special use permit?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Sorry, who seconded that?
Dan.
Dan.
Dan, okay. Thank you. Okay, so roll call. Board Member Caruso?
In favor.
Board Member Hitt?
In favor.
Board Member Hukey?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder?
In favor.
And Chairperson Hext?
In favor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss at this time? All right. And we'll see you on November 9th at 7:00 PM.
We have to adjourn the meeting, Deb?
I, yep. Could I have, somebody want to say something or? No? Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Barb? You said that?
John?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay, Board Member Caruso?
In favor.
Board Member Hitt?
In favor.
Board Member Hukey?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder?
In favor.
And Chairperson Hext?
In favor.
Terrific. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Goodbye.